We'll call this regular meeting of the Waukees City Council to order. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is due by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Becky, please do roll call.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Crone.
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Here.
Councilmembers Grove and Pierce are absent.
Agenda item D is open forum. Open forum is the time for anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act or on any item on the agenda other than a public hearing. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council at this time? If so, please approach the podium. If participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. Open forum is closed. Agenda item E is agenda approval. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Item G1, consideration of approval of a resolution correcting scrivener's error and amending resolution number 2025-208 to establish June 11th, 2025 at 2:00 PM for taking bids for Little Walnut Creek Drive water main improvements project. Can I get a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
So the resolutions related to this project were provided by bond council and we had two bid openings, one on the 10th and one on the 11th, and they had the 11th in both sets of resolutions. So it was an error that they caught and they've provided us with a resolution to correct that error.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Agenda item H1 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend chapter 167 zoning regulations, signs by amending section 167.13 association identification signs, commercial and industrial. And now to close this public hearing open, Becky, have you received any correspondence?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Andy?
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. Before you tonight, I don't have any slides, so you just get to look at me, I guess, or don't look at me, whatever you want. For you tonight is a proposal for an amendment to our sign code, which is chapter 167, specifically 167.13, which regulates association signage for commercial and industrial developments. The proposed amendment would make association signs for commercial industrial developments consistent with requirements for standalone monument signs that you see, you know, up and down our commercial corridors and things like that. So standard setbacks, typical square footage of 60 square feet, max height of 15 feet, and then the brick and stone requirement, things like that. The one thing that this would additionally add to commercial and industrial association signs is to permit a limited amount of signage for businesses within a specific development to add some tenant panel to the association sign. So a max square footage of 60 square feet and no more than 70% of that allowed max square footage could be allotted to the tenants of the development. So the way the code is written is that you, of course, have to be a tenant within the development. This would kind of help some tenants that maybe aren't right along the public thoroughfare, but their property doesn't touch, so they couldn't have a sign out along the street. So a good example of this would be like the Waukees Town Center signs that you see along Southeast Alice's Road or along Hickman Road. This would be, of course, a much smaller scale compared to those signs, but something similar to that to allow some tenants within these commercial areas that aren't all controlled by one owner. So the purpose of the sign would be required to be within an outlot that's owned by the HOA, or excuse me, by the owners' association, or within an easement and owned and maintained by the owners' association. So really, that's the intent of the proposed amendment. For the last several years, of course, we've had lots of commercial development coming into our community and a lot of these different developments, they're not all on one lot. And so folks are trying to figure out, how can I have signage that's along the commercial corridor? And, you know, for the last several years, we've been telling them, well, no, you can't do that. So I think with our experience with Waukees Town Center, you can kind of see that, you know, a limited amount of tenant signage maybe isn't the worst thing to allow to provide. Again, with, you know, the intent that there is something that identifies, hey, this is X commercial development and here's some of the tenants within the development. So that's really the intent behind the proposed code update. So staff would, I would note that the P and Z Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this at their meeting last Tuesday. Staff recommends holding the public hearing. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. And now to clear this public hearing item closed. Agenda item H2 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend chapter 169 zoning regulations, district regulations by amending chapter 169.01 districts established, and chapter 169.02 official zoning map by repealing said sections and enacting in lieu thereof the readoption of the official zoning map. And now to clear this public hearing open, Becky, have you received any correspondence?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Melissa.
Good evening, mayor and council. This one's pretty simple. The last official zoning map was adopted in April of 2023. Since that time, there have been seven, sorry, 17 rezonings. This map is just updated to reflect all of those rezonings and then to approve the official zoning map. Staff recommends holding the public hearing and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
And now declare this public hearing item closed. Agenda item H3 is a public hearing on plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Little Walnut Creek Drive water main improvements project. Can I get a motion? Or, sorry, and now to close this public hearing open, I'm skipping some steps. Becky, have you received any correspondence on this?
No, none received in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This public hearing is for the project shown up on the screen. This would be along northwest Little Walnut Creek Drive and northwest Prairie Rose Lane. The project includes all the labor materials and equipment necessary to construct approximately 2,600 feet of eight-inch water main represented by the yellow dash line up there. The existing blue line represents existing water main infrastructure that's currently, I believe, a four-inch main, a variation of four and two-inch mains along there. There's currently no fire hydrants or fire coverage along there, so this would be extending that yellow line between two existing eight-inch mains in our system around this residential area. Includes all the necessary fittings, hydrants, connections to existing system, et cetera, as well as service reconnections and surface restoration. We do have this in the approved CIP with a budget of $720,000 for fiscal year 2026, and the project does have a completion date of May 31st, 2026. Happy to take any questions, but staff recommends holding the public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
Okay. Now to clear this public hearing item closed. And agenda item H4 is public hearing on plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Warrior Lane Roundabout Water Main Connection Project. Now to clear this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any correspondence?
No correspondence received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen is the intersection of South Warrior Lane and Ashworth Drive, southeast Ashworth Drive. So this project includes approximately 363 feet of 12-inch water main connection between the two existing water mains. Through hydraulic modeling of our system, this was a location that we identified would provide benefit for not only redundancy, but also pressure consistency with our system model. So you can see the yellow line on the map represents making that connection between two existing 12-inch mains, as well as there's an eight-inch main on the end of Northview Drive we would also connect into this as well. Primarily installation is via directional boring with some open trenching for that eight-inch connection there on the east end of Northview Drive. Again, it includes all the necessary valves, fittings, connections to the existing system to complete this project. This is also in our approved FY '26, 2030 CIP with a budget of $200,000 in fiscal year 2026, and the project has a completion date of May 31st, 2026. Happy to take any questions if you have any, but staff recommends holding the public hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council at this time? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls.
There are no hands raised in Zoom.
All right. Now to clear this public hearing item closed. Agenda item I1, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend chapter 167 zoning regulations, signs by amending section 167.13 association identification signs for commercial and industrial. This is an introduction and a first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title only.
Second.
Andy?
Nothing further to add, other than staff recommends approval of the first consideration. Happy to take any questions. Turn.
Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Agenda item I2, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend chapter 169 zoning regulations, district regulations by amending chapter 169.01 districts established, and chapter 169.02 official zoning map by repealing said sections and enacting in lieu thereof the readoption of the official zoning map. This is also an introduction and a first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title only.
Okay. Melissa?
I have nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval of the first consideration.
Any question? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Item I3, consideration of approval of a, sorry, I3A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Can I get a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost have been filed with the city clerk for review upon request. Staff recommends approving the resolution. Happy to take questions.
Please vote.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Item I3B, consideration of approval of a resolution awarding contract. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen, you can see a bid summary of our bids received on June 11th. Just last week, we had five general contractors submitting bids for this project. The engineer's estimate was $590,000 and the apparent low bidder, you can see up there, was Max Smith Construction out of Creston, Iowa, approximately 18% under our engineer's estimate. V and K does recommend awarding the project to Max Smith Construction LLC at Creston, Iowa, in the dollar amount shown. The city does not have prior working experience with this contractor. However, V and K does have recent satisfactory experience working with these folks in the cities of Dennison, Casey, and Dallas Center, Iowa, ranging in project scope, dollar amounts from half a million dollars or $340,000 to half a million to over a million dollars. So with that recommendation and their review and very recent experience working with them, we will follow suit with, staff will follow suit with the recommendation to award. Happy to take any questions if you have any at this time.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Item I4 for Warrior Lane Roundabout Water Main Connection Project, I4A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Move to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
The plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost are on file with the city clerk for review upon request. Staff recommends approving the resolution. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
Are there any road closures of note associated with this or with the boring? Is it kind of?
Primarily off, out of the traveling roadway. I would expect any permanent or long-term, maybe some interruption as they're unloading or loading equipment, delivering material to the work area.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
I4B, consideration of approval of a resolution awarding contract. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen, you can see the summary of bids received for this project on June 10th. We had, again, five general contractors submitting bids for this. The engineer's estimate was approximately $175,000. And again, Max Smith Construction LLC out of Creston, Iowa, was the apparent low bidder at $161,641, approximately 8% below our engineer's estimate. Again, we do not have prior working experience with this contractor. However, their recent references from V and K and their direct experience with them being satisfactory, we would concur with the recommendation to award to them for the dollar amount shown up on the screen. Happy to take any questions. I will add one additional comment about interruption on traffic, but also pedestrian traffic. We're very sensitive to when we will be impacting the walkways. There will be some sidewalk that will be required to remove, likely replaced temporarily and then permanently replaced as well. So certainly work around the school morning and PM sessions if we are doing work at that time, or avoiding it altogether at a winter break or Thanksgiving break or summer break in the spring if we can. So we shall see.
Any additional questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Item J1, consent agenda part one. Can I get a motion? Do approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Item J2, consent agenda part two. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
I will be abstaining during a professional conflict.
Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Abstain.
Item J3, consideration of approval of a resolution approving temporary use permit for Bellino Fireworks at 1100 East Hickman Road. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Andy?
All right. For you tonight is a request from Bellino Fireworks Incorporated for a temporary use permit for a temporary fireworks sales stand located at 1100 East Hickman Road. This is the U-Haul site. They're in the southeast corner of Alice's and Hickman. It's approximately a 2,400 square foot tent, again, for temporary fireworks sales, as well as a storage container and other associated structures. The intent of the permit request is from June 24th through July 5th. Proposed hours of operation would be from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM on a daily basis. The fire marshal will be required to inspect the tent once it's constructed, or put up, I should say. The proposed temporary use permit, they have submitted all of the required information from the state fire marshal, as well as proof of insurance permission from U-Haul to locate on the site and all the other required information. Staff is recommending approval of the temporary use permit for Bellino Fireworks Incorporated located at 1100 East Hickman Road. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
And item J4, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat for Torstensen Subdivision, plat one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Andy?
All right. So the owner and applicants in this request are Ted and Tammy Torstensen. The property is generally located east of Sixth Street or Utes Avenue. It's outlined in red on the screen. It's located north of Indian Ridge Drive, so just north of Painted Woods, or kind of between the different phases of Painted Woods development east of Utes Avenue. It's 5.65 acres in area. If you recall, last year, this property was rezoned from A1 to R1, which is a single-family residential. Preliminary plat was also approved in 2024 as well. There are two lots proposed, and one outlot. Lot one is 2.14 acres in area and lot two is just under 1 and 3/4 acres in area. Lot two is where the existing home that's on the property would continue to be located at. And then one outlot, outlot Z, which is kind of this half moon shape on the north side of the site. That is the floodplain that runs through the property. Outlot Z will be required to be tied to lot two for ownership and maintenance. No public improvements are required for this particular plat. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat for Torstensen Subdivision, plat one. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Agenda item J5 for the Commonwealth Place, and plat one. A5A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Melissa?
The applicant is Cross Country Estates LLC. I'm going to go ahead and do A, B, C, and D all together. So the applicant is Cross Country Estates LLC. The property is located south of Hickman Road and west of 11th Street, contains 17.16 acres. The properties zoned R4, road dwelling and townhome dwelling district. Final plat and site plan identify a total of 117 lots intended for detached townhome development. All units will be three-bedroom and a little over 1,000 square feet in area. Buildings will be a mix of one-story and two-story. Each unit will include a two-car attached garage. I have the final plat in here that you can see a little bit better. So there's the final plat. Final plat shows the 117 lots. And then outlot Y for all the common areas within that townhome development. And then outlot Z on the north side of Maple Street is actually zoned commercial. That will be used for detention. It'll be owned by a different OA for that side, so all of the outlot on the south side of Maple will be owned by the HOA for the townhome, and then the north side will be a commercial OA. The public improvements include the extension of Maple Street, as well as the extension of public utilities along Maple Street. Two accesses will be provided into the site. Let me go back to the site plan. One will be off of Maple Street and then one will be off of the east side, off of 11th Street. And then there are also 11 units at the north side of the site that will be accessed with driveways off of Maple Street. Those are the only units that will have direct driveways off of Maple. The streets interior to the site will be private streets. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. Landscape buffers will be provided along both the north and south sides of the development. Five-foot wide sidewalks will be provided adjacent to the site along both Maple and 11th Street. And then also sidewalks will be provided internal to the site to provide pedestrian access across the development. The utilities within the site will be privately owned and maintained. Again, stormwater detention will be provided within basins located within the two outlots. Parkland dedication has been satisfied with a fee in lieu of land dedication. The building elevations, let me go to that. So there's a few different elevations provided. They're proposed to be constructed mostly of vinyl lap siding, vinyl board and baton siding, and then stone veneer. So here are some of the different elevations. That's it. Yeah. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat site plan, construction drawings, and final plat, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
So my only question in regards to the fee in lieu of the parkland, is there going to be a park southwest of there, right?
Yeah, it's very close. I don't know if this map actually shows it. Yeah, so if you go a little, yeah, it's a little southwest of that.
Okay. Thank you. That's the big one that we're planning that we're going to take four phases to get it all.
Yeah, the spring crush. It's spring crush.
Two phases, okay. Thank you.
All right. Please vote.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Agenda item J5B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving construction drawings. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Item J5C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat.
Move to approve. Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
And J5D, consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan. Can I get a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
Melissa?
Nothing further to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I was kind of hoping you, like, threw a wrench in. All right. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair.
Yes.
Councilmember Crone.
Yes.
Councilmember Grove.
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg.
Yes.
All right. Item K, reports. Brad?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of items. As a reminder to the mayor and council, the final phase of your strategic planning process is tomorrow beginning at 3 o'clock here at City Hall. Also, on next Tuesday, the 24th, we will be holding a ribbon cutting and ceremony for the Park Day sculptures at Tallgrass Pond. That will begin at 5:30 PM. Should be a short little ceremony with a couple of activities as well planned for that date. The artist, sculptor, will be in attendance and will also be speaking at that event. And then I just wanted to ask Rudy to briefly give an update. We are in the fourth full day of our Phase Three of our water conservation plan. And obviously, there was a lot of activity over the weekends. Just want to give Rudy a couple of minutes to go through where we're at for, as it relates to the city of Waukees.
So as a Thursday afternoon, about 3 o'clock, Central Water Works implemented Stage Three of the water reduction or conservation plan. And that is the mandatory banning or stopping of lawn irrigation. And so in that past, since that date to yesterday, I have some numbers. We went from approximately 73 million gallons per day production down to about approximately 50, which that gets us down into the 70% percentage of our total production capacity of the plants as they're operating at full capacity. So that's the good thing. One of the status quo numbers is the nitrate levels of both the Des Moines and Rackham Rivers continue to be consistent upwards of that 16 milligrams per liter, up to 17 milligrams per liter. That has a ripple effect through the treatment plants, through the gallery, and then ultimately blending that finished water to maintain that below 10 milligrams per liter maximum contaminant threshold. So we are meeting that. I think the last report was probably just over nine milligrams per liter in that finished water product. So well below that comfortably, both the water producers, Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works, Hope City, and those folks are having a feeling much better when it comes to plant operations and the demand that's being requested there. Due to the nitrate levels continuing to be high, though, the ban continues to be in effect for the foreseeable future. Really unknown when that would be lifted at this point in time. In past history, the nitrate removal facility has ran into early to mid-July historically. So if that tells you anything about the duration we're talking about here. So that's kind of the update. We have been communicating with our irrigation account holders through email, through automated calls, and through other social media platforms or whatnot to get the message out, to remind folks that the ban is in place. Compliance is expected for that. Obviously, there are some exemptions or things that allow folks to continue. SAD placed in 2025, commercial. commercial, um, car wash facilities continue to operate, et cetera. So but the message was strong last Thursday, and obviously the numbers show that it was well received and compliance is, is, uh, following suit. So that's kind of the latest. We are, um, today was the first day where we've actually taken our irrigation report and consumption. So we did a report from yesterday to today. Where were those, um, consumers at? And we've, um, been contacting them, um, primarily commercial and business properties at this point. Uh, we did speak with all, um, those landscape companies or those companies that manage a lot of irrigation facilities or, or, uh, equipment for commercial businesses to, to turn them off. And so that's been one avenue to get that accomplished, as well as, again, this report that tells us from day to day, and we'll run it daily, and we'll continue at the top, and we'll communicate with those folks that, um, they need to stop, uh, unless they are exempt for the requirements. So, um, we will move forward from there. So we actually did post folks today, um, informing them they needed to stop irrigating because they were on the report today, and they had twenty-four hours essentially. We didn't put that in there. We just essentially, we'll come back tomorrow to confirm and follow up with the report that we received, uh, overnight to confirm that they stopped using that irrigation water. So that's the update. Brad, is there anything else you wanted me to cover?
Thank you to Waki residents for complying, and I think we're in a lot better shape about all here locally, but hopefully we get those nitrates down.
Yep.
Something more regular.
Will we be fining people? One of the messages that went outside.
Yep, it is on the notice. That's posted to the door, given to the folks that there is a thirty-dollar reconnect fee. Uh, if we were to shut you off, so the message is you need to stop immediately. If you do not, you will, your water will be turned off, and here are the monetary penalties that may or may not come with that. There is a thirty-dollar reconnection fee. That's very similar to if you don't pay your monthly utility bill, the process there. And we're, again, following that process very closely. And then there is the municipal infraction of seven hundred and fifty dollars for your first offense and one thousand dollars for every offense after the fact. Um, but there are legal processes and steps to, uh, enforce those. Um, and we will cross that bridge when we need to. Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I also want to thank all of city staff for the work put in. It's a much more comprehensive effort to, um, to go through this process, something that we've never had to do, or at least haven't for many, 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 many years. And so just appreciate everybody's work on it. Uh, anything else?
That's all I have.
Any updates?
I'm here.
Okay.
No report.
No report?
Wrong.
No report?
No report.
All right, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, have a good weekend.
Happy early birthday.
Oh, thank you, Bob.